Welcome to the December 9 Campbell County School Board meeting. Before we start with our regular agenda, we have some special guests as well as from Leesville Road Elementary School, fifth grade to serenade us. And we also have a lot of beaming parents here. So they are under the direction of Alice Watson and let's hear some Christmas carols. Some Christmas beard.
We're in the spirit, the holiday spirit, the spirit, the holiday spirit, the spirit, the holiday spirit. We are in the spirit now. We're in the spirit, the holiday spirit, the spirit, the holiday spirit, the spirit, the holiday spirit. We are in the spirit now. Raise your voice, sing out loud, bop doo, bop doo, bada bow. Send your voice to the crowd, bop doo, bop doo, bada bow. You can join the celebration, come on, come on, come on, yeah. In the spirit, bells are ringing, folks are singing, families singing. Gotta get, gotta get in the spirit, music's playing, folks are swaying, holidaying. Gotta get, gotta get in the spirit now. In the spirit, the holiday spirit, the spirit, the holiday spirit, the spirit, the holiday spirit. We are in the spirit now. We're in the spirit, the holiday spirit, the spirit, the holiday spirit, the spirit, the holiday spirit. We are in the spirit now. Raise your voice, sing out loud, bop doo, bop doo, bada bow. Send your voice to the crowd, bop doo, bop doo, bada bow. You can join the celebration, come on, come on, come on, yeah. You can join the celebration, come on, come on, come on, yeah. You can join the celebration now. We're in the spirit now, yeah.
That was fantastic, thank you, boy.
Wait, you were solo?
Jingle bells, Batman smells, not Pepper. I sit down and the room is empty.
For everybody that was watching online, that was fifth graders from Leesville Road Elementary School bringing us some Christmas cheer. So we will open our meeting with a pledge of allegiance, followed by a brief moment of silence. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it's ruled, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Did we have anybody that wanted to speak from the floor today?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. So then we will start with approval of the November 11 meeting minutes. I will entertain a motion.
The motion approved as presented.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Phillips, a second by Mrs. Vaughn. Any questions or additions to the minutes? On favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Payment of the bills. I will entertain a motion for that.
Motion.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Maddox and a second by Mrs. Tanner. Any questions on the bills? On favor of payment, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Proceeding on, acceptance of donations, Mrs. Panahan.
Tonight you have 12 donations for approval. Unless you have any questions on those, I ask that you approve them as presented.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or observations or?
Commend everybody on the great donation.
Yeah, big thanks.
Liberty University, donation to Alcestista.
Yeah, I'm curious about that one. Is that from a foundation or?
That's one from Conference USA. They received a donation last year, so they are receiving it for this upcoming year. And so they plan to use that to support their work with conscious discipline and some other things that they're doing to support their students.
Okay, all right, yeah. That's very generous of our in-town neighbors. Thank you.
And I think in the past they've come down and made a big deal of the, yeah, they've already done that.
Yeah, they did this year.
Had an assembly.
Huge pepper alley.
Had a pepper alley, that's right, players and.
It was like 60, I think 60 of them came down.
Yeah.
They bought a big bus.
Athletes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was.
Great. All right, that motion passes. All right, consideration of non-resident tuition.
You have a list of students for approval as non-resident tuition students? Unless you have any questions, I ask that you approve that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Mrs. Parker, a second by Mr. Phillips to approve our non-resident tuition students. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mrs. Hunley, personnel report.
You have a short personnel report in front of you. There's nothing significant on there. We've had a few resignations and hires. Nothing that I'm worried about on the certified side. Dr. Ranelle let me know that he is still short the seven part-time and full-time positions. But we've started the budget process and we'll be looking at that salary scale. So unless you have any other questions, I'd ask that you approve it as written.
Did you hire us a kindergarten teacher?
Yes, Mrs. Thomas did. Yes, she did.
Thank you.
Yes. Yes.
I have a motion.
Motion. Second.
Motion by Mr. Phillips, second by Mr. Maddox, approve personnel report. Thank you. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. State and local statement of economic interest.
Is that time of year again? As you know, the forms are to be completed in January and are due by February 3rd. So I printed out the new form and last year's filing, so you have it for reference. And then attached in the board docs is the digital copy and it is a fillable PDF, so you can complete it electronically and then just print it out to sign it. If you have any questions, just call or email me.
Get your mind on February 2nd.
Yes. Your phone will be ringing all day.
A gentle reminder would be helpful, yes. All right, Dr. Hale, academic calendar.
So, good evening, Chairman, members of the board. Today you do have a draft of the student calendar for the 25-26 school year. It is very similar to this school year. There are not noticeable changes between the two. We really listened last year and some of the highlights of our calendar include fall break. That has been very popular. And it does give us that opportunity at the end of the nine weeks to have a little bit of time to get ready. Also next year, currently, part of our fall break aligns with CVCC. We have several students who take part in their CT Academy and follow the CVCC calendar if they're also in STEM. So that's a positive for us. We have a teacher workday slash professional development every nine weeks, so that is included. And that has been very much appreciated by our teachers and staff. We have 90 days each semester. That is needed for our secondary schedules to get us to the appropriate time. And the positive feedback that we heard for the shift we made with this calendar for this school year was two weeks during the winter holiday. People need a break and they need some time to spend with family and loved ones and travel, which is what many of our families do. So our calendar is very much that. The only major difference is I tried to make the colors the same, which is a challenge. So that's really what you will notice. And thank you, Tracy, for your patience with that. But that is what we have for our calendar. It is not an action item. This is just a draft for you all to have. I'd be happy to answer any questions and of course can also do that at a later time if you have any.
I have a quick question, Ms. Amy, for December 19th. And it's color-coded yellow and it's a two-hour early dismissal. Will that also be professional development?
It won't be that day. Anything that was an unusual part of the calendar, we tried to draw attention with the yellow. So, great question. We have left it as a two-hour early dismissal because that's a lot of the times when our schools do their holiday concerts and so forth. And because not all of our students can come in the evenings, it does allow them to see that during the school day. Great question.
And thank you for the March Teacher Work Day.
Yes. We were able to do that last year. It made a big difference. And putting it in the calendar is great just for planning purposes.
Cool, thank you.
I don't know if this is a question for you. Have we booked graduation?
We are in the process of booking graduation.
Because I know Lynchburg's talking about.
Correct. And so I have been in contact with our events coordinator there. The only thing that they have put our request in, at this time, they're also just working through the requests that also are coming from Liberty University. They have to get those booked first and then they will follow up. But I have been in communication with her.
Okay, thank you.
Correct, very much so, Mr. Maddox. Great point.
So we've got one teacher workday. That's just, that's no professional development. Is that going to be completely solely for the teachers to have?
Currently, so what we're planning for this year, which would be my recommendation for next year. So once we have the student calendar, then we follow up with staff. The time between semesters, it needs to be a workday and not professional development because our teachers are switching schedules. And also, our teachers have done a lot this year. So for our current professional development, it's going to be a workday in January in between the semesters for the January coming. And then it would be the same for the next year, would be my recommendation for that staff calendar.
I just want to make sure I didn't, for that reason, that's why I was asking, that there was not added schedules of professional development. The teachers actually could take advantage of that day.
Yes. And additionally, we have final exams again this school year, so it is important that our high school teachers have that time.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? I'm glad that everybody likes our calendar.
I think this is really trying to be mindful and it flows well with our nine weeks as well as what we know that our teachers and staff need and families.
And there wasn't that little tag day that people were not happy about this past time?
Yes.
That one day?
Yeah, one day between, before the winter break, correct.
Lots of calls on that one.
Yes. Well, thank you. If you have any other questions, please don't hesitate to reach out. Thank you.
Dr. Wilson, an update on the student support program.
Evening, Vice Chairman, Dr. Stanley, members of the board. As we come to the end, we're very close to the end of our first semester. I figured it would be an appropriate time to review some discipline data with you and kind of look. And fortunately, we are trending in some positive directions with some of our kind of major behaviors and minor behaviors. Relatively speaking, referral numbers are down across the board. But looking at things that are major impacts like out-of-school suspensions or long-term suspensions and some of the impact of maybe some of the programs that we've initiated here in Campbell County in the last semester, we want to share some numbers with you today. So first, just out-of-school suspension. Last year at this time, we're about 15% lower for our days out-of-school suspension than we were last year at this time. It's about 60 or 70 less out-of-school suspensions, which would imply to us there are 60 or 70 less major offenses that are occurring within the school. So from a big perspective countywide, we've seen a decrease in the number of out-of-school suspensions from last year to this year. Really significant, I think, and a tribute to the work being done by our principals, teachers, and families, community, and some of our partnerships, our 10-day suspensions, the most severe kind of consequences of violations of our code of conduct. We're down about 50% from last year. So a big dip there and a lot of good work's been done on the front end to kind of help be preventive in some of those things. And so two of those that we really want to highlight, so when we look at THC or drug violations and tobacco violations. We all know vapes, whether they're THC vapes or whether they're nicotine vapes, have been something that's pervasive not only here but across the state and across the region, across the country. And so we've seen a significant decline in both of those this year with some implementation and different things that are going on in our schools. Drug violations were down about 82%. We'll kind of look at those numbers. And the nicotine vapes are down as well. So when we look in kind of into that a little bit, this year we started an alternative to suspension program for our nicotine vapes and any tobacco possessions. It's a program that's funded, well, free, from the American Lung Association. They provide different modules. And so we changed our practice from being an out-of-school suspension model where we typically would have had a kid, if they had possession of nicotine, they would have been an out-of-school suspension. Now it's a three-day in-school suspension and a completion of four different modules from the American Lung Association. Where they talk about what's in a vape and what happens and how to break addiction and where to get help. So students complete that while they're in in-school suspension as opposed to being an out-of-school suspension model. So we've seen about a 25% reduction in the number of incidents and there's a deposit of the kids are still in school. We don't have kids out of school and at home. And last year at this time, there were 71 out-of-school suspensions due to nicotine. And this year, I think the number was 55, and they're all in school. So there were no out-of-school suspensions due to nicotine possession this year. And we've actually seen a lower number of incidents year-to-date. A big partnership we took on this year is partnering with court services, the sheriff's department. I think there's some continued education opportunity through some of the curriculum additions that we have. And so I think a lot of hard work on a lot of people's part. I think our administrators have been vigilant with the tools that they have in their building and the enforcement part. I think consistency's played a big role, but we've seen a significant decrease in the number of drug violations this year. About 82% reduction. There were 61 incidents at this point last year. And now, as this year-to-date, there's been 11, right? So, and really five of those came in the first two weeks of school. So I think the message became clear from our administrators and their enforcement and consistency and with our partnership with court services and the sheriff's department, they've been really supportive. And I think our families have become more aware of what's going on in the community. And so I think that collective effort from students, families, administrators, and our court services really kind of working together as a community to address this issue has been really effective. And combined, if there are more days kids can be in school and not out of school for whatever purpose, that's going to be better instruction, better school culture, better climate, and just a safer place for everybody to be. So we've seen some significant drops. We hope these trends will continue. I hope that our community partners, we appreciate all their support so far and all the work they've done and our school administrators that try every day to keep things going in the right direction. I'll take any questions you may have.
Can you send all that to us?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
It's really great work. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you so much, Brian.
No problem.
Awesome.
People in the building do it all.
This is a very quick meeting. We are already at the superintendent's updates.
Well, first of all, I'd like to also thank Ms. Watson and our fifth graders for coming in and spreading a little. Thank you, Mr. Slater, for all being here and watching our kids give us a little bit of Christmas beard. That was very nice. And we thank the parents for bringing the kids out. Just had a few updates for you. One is the fact that we are, once again, recipients of a security equipment grant. And we were just notified the last week or the week before that we'll be receiving $153,000. You know, we've been receiving money for this grant over the past few years and putting it to good use. And it's good to see that, you know, Dr. Ranelle and his staff are on top of the application process and we're going to receive that grant once again. So that part is certainly exciting. I also want to update you on our capacity enrollment status at Brookneal Elementary School. So if you remember when we had the Walpert, the company that came in and did the study on our capacities, attendance, boundaries, and student enrollments, they identified Brookneal Elementary School as being the school that's at the highest capacity. You don't automatically think that because their overall enrollment's not very big. But in terms of their building, they're busting at the seams. And when we had COVID, we weren't using the cafeteria, so we put all of our preschool kids in the cafeteria. And if you've never seen that, that's something to behold. They've taken up the whole cafeteria. So we just realized that this is, they're making it work, but at the same time, our kids are not using the cafeteria for lunch. They're going back to classrooms to eat.
It's not for teachers either.
And our teachers are not able to get a break either. So we need to figure out what we're going to do there. So we've thought about a few different options. One's knocking down walls, making some spaces within the building bigger. We talked about moving our fifth-grade students up to William Campbell. Mr. Cartwright did a nice job of coming up with a plan to receive them. But at the end of the day, we feel like putting a modular unit behind the school will be the best option. Just because we feel like fifth graders, their place is at Brookneal Elementary School. It's not after Millwood High School. So this is where we've landed. So I'm working on a contract with Box Modular to have this modular unit in place. It will be two classrooms. Each classroom has its own bathroom. And we'll continue to make progress on that and hopefully have it installed before April. That's the goal.
And that will be for the fifth grade?
And that will be for two fifth-grade classrooms, correct.
How many are there now?
Three.
But that's more of a short term. What do we think in the long term?
Well, this is a three-year lease, so at the end of that time, I mean, the lease is very manageable in terms of finances. So we'll just have to decide if we're going to renew the lease or if we need to do something different. I mean, enrollment's not always been where it is now. According to that study, it's projected to stay where it is for the next six, seven years. So we might have to renew it at the time. But I think it's still our best option.
Did you mention the cost of the?
Cost is going to be about $30,000 a year. So again, I think that's reasonable.
The layout of where it's going to be placed is pretty convenient. Well, it's convenient both for the kids and the aesthetics of where it's going to be are still pretty acceptable. According to what, you know, we went down there and looked at it. So, and it'll have sewer and water. So it's not perfect, but I think it's a good option. And it's a good problem to have down there. Too many kids is a real good problem to have down at Brookneal. So I think, even though this isn't a long-term solution, that's even better for the community. But I think it will work for, it will work. And Plan B, which isn't desirable about moving the fifth grade up to William Campbell, can still be on the table.
That's right.
What are the cons against that? I mean, I haven't been in on the details of this, but I mean, I'm just, you're spending $30,000 a year. And I'm assuming you have plenty of capacity at the high school to move.
Correct. There is that space, but it might still require additional staffing. And you're not going to hire an additional staff person for $30,000. So that's a savings if you look at it that way. It's just, I mean, development-wise, that age group is still, they're more elementary-aged.
I was just thinking, if you had the ability to really separate them, if you did move them to the combined school where they weren't, you know, filtered in with the seventh, I mean, the, yeah, the sixth, seventh, eighth grader so much and having more separation.
Nine, 10.
You can separate them, but that doesn't mean that you're bringing them into a culture. I mean, yeah, you can put two classrooms at the end of the hallway and say, those two classrooms or those three classrooms are for fifth grade and no one's allowed in the fifth grade area. But at the same time, you have elementary assemblies, you have elementary activities.
They're missing out on.
Okay, yeah, they'll be able to go to the high school pep rally, but at the same time, age-appropriate, this is still, we feel like is important.
How about security? Will it be fenced or is it, you tell the fence, Dan?
Fence is already, yeah, it's around the property. Now we'll probably have to take it down to get the unit installed and then we'll reinstall the fence, correct. Any other questions regarding that? Okay. The last thing I have is, we're still on track to host the VSPA Regional Spring Forum. That'll be at Rustberg High School on March the 26th. We've got a meeting set up with Lucy Carson. She's the school board chair, oh, the VSPA regional chair. And so we'll be kind of working out some details with her. Hopefully that meeting will take place before Christmas and I'll share with you anything that we come up with that we might need. But we're still on track, so.
For the record, it was a slip of the tongue. It's at the middle school. I think you said high school.
Yes, I'm sorry, Rustberg Middle School, correct, thank you.
So she's coming down to coordinate the?
She was on, she was scheduled to come down on Wednesday, excuse me, Thursday of this week. But she texted me right before our meeting, said that she liked to reschedule for the following week. So I don't have an exact time and date for that, but we'll hopefully do it before Christmas.
But it's our agenda.
It's our agenda, correct.
That was a big discussion.
Yeah, we still might need to fine-tune that a little bit.
Yeah, and that's fine. I mean, we look forward to, we look forward to hosting that and working with her.
That'll be a great date. Looking forward to it. So then the last thing I want to bring your attention to is you have a budget calendar that Michelle has provided for us. Kind of gives you an overview of our target dates as well as the board of supervisors. And you can see we come back from Christmas and pretty quickly, January 14th, we've got our joint board meeting with the supervisors. And this year it will be over at the Haverhill. So just kind of putting that on your radar. I think the governor's supposed to release his budget, we hope, right before we get out for break. So we'll take a look at that and try to start looking at our priorities for the county in terms of, you know, our spending priorities for next year, things that we have on our list right now. We've got bus driver pay being one. We've also got the gifted program. Right now, we had a conversation today where we've got two teachers that we're targeting as additional positions to add to what we currently have. And then we also are hoping to pull off a 3% raise with the budget. So those are our big three priorities. We've got other positions that we might sprinkle in based on need as we continue to evaluate that going through the budget season.
That's all, yes, sir? Great, thank you. All right. Last month we started to the left, so I think we'll start with Mr. Maddox to the right.
I'd just like to congratulate our football team. We had a great year and came up short, but that's okay. They played their heart out. And I'd like to thank everybody from central office that came to watch. That was nice to see y'all there. I'd also like to thank. Brookville actually got first and Rustburg got second. And lastly, I thought the VSBA meeting was a good meeting. I think we're going to look at AI again a little differently than what we did the first time. And since Barry's not here, we're going to talk about it. He was recognized as twenty-five years of service to the kids at Campbell County, and I think that's great. I wish he was here, so that's all I got.
Mr. Phillips?
Rustburg Middle School had their winter wonderland family night on the fifth. Combination of conferences, chorus concert, and family night. And they had two hundred families attend that event, so that was very well-attended. Yellow Branch Elementary School, their kindergarten and music club performance is on the tenth at six P.M. And then Rustburg High School, the Christmas chorus concert is tomorrow night. And then the band concert is on the seventeenth. The Fall Musical, Your Good Man, Charlie Brown, was very successful. It was held from November twenty-first to twenty-fourth. And did want to thank the Brookville High School Theater Program, they came out and supported that as well, so that was great to see. History students had a good trip to Washington, D.C. on the fourth of December, and the Senior Community Service Day was back on November twenty-fifth. So it's been a lot going on in Rustburg and still a few more events coming up. Thanks again to the musical presentation for the meeting tonight by the Leesville Road Elementary School students. That was outstanding. And then continued, thanks and appreciation to the Campbell County Educational Foundation. We got some emails from them over the past month, and they are continuing to work hard and give Campbell County schools great financial support. So thanks very much for that program, so. Yeah, good school board conference, I agree with Gary. Some good breakout sessions in that. And happy holidays to everybody. That's all I got.
That's fine.
Well, I just, excuse me, wanted to say Merry Christmas to everyone. We have lots of Christmas festivities going on, including Christmas parties, and the Santa shop is coming back to Leesville Road. And I'll be working as one of the elves on Friday afternoon. Tomorrow night will be the fifth grade concert at Leesville Road at five-thirty P.M. The sixteenth through the twentieth will be Spirit Week at Leesville Road with lots of fun themed days and activities planned. Santa will visit on December nineteenth at Leesville Road. December twentieth, there will be Christmas sing-alongs and parties, and early release is at one-thirty-five P.M. Thank you to Leesville Road PTO, they raised over ten thousand dollars during their fall fundraiser.
Tanner?
Well, I want to shout out a couple of things. I don't know if you want to say anything about Leesville Road that we missed, that Kristen did not announce, give you an opportunity to say anything. Thank you absolutely for our fifth grade chorus performing and, and bringing them here to us today. But is there anything you want to mention? Putting you on the spot here. Did I miss anything?
Glad to be here.
I don't think, I don't know if Kristen missed anything, but.
I think I got it all.
We, it's, it's rare sometimes that we have our principals in the, in the audience, and so we, we want to give you a chance. We'd love for y'all to be here, but we'd love for y'all to, to be able to have an opportunity to, to share anything. But I think, I think we probably have hit with that, wouldn't it, being able to celebrate with us by all means. I do want to shout out about Timberlake Church. This morning, we delivered two hundred and thirty gifts, pack, and I say gifts, I think there was probably a hundred bikes that went to Campbell County students alone. From Timberlake Church, they adopted three hundred and eighty-five total families for kids. Two hundred and thirty of them were our tomahawk Leesville, Brookville Middle School and Brookville High School students, and they adopt farther. So if it's a middle school student and they have a sibling that's not in school, a younger sibling or older sibling that's not, they cover the whole family, so they make sure everybody gets it. So there were a lot of volunteers, a lot of packages, and a lot of bikes that were delivered this year to our students. And so just a thank you to Timberlake Church and their big hearts and their blessings. And I mean, there was just overwhelming. And I'm sure, Joel, you probably, I, I missed the Leesville Road delivery. We were doing tomahawks because it took a box truck for bikes, a couple of box trucks to deliver. But it was amazing, the alpining to our kids and our families. And so we really appreciate Timberlake Church and those donations that they've done. Got to head over to Brookville High School and vote on their door decorations for their teachers. And that was wonderful and fun to see with all the construction and the chaos that is at Brookville High School, to be able to walk in and the teachers that still went all out and the kids that went all out to decorate the doors and the super fun things. And I got to peek into the new cafeteria, and it's starting to really look like a cafeteria. I think one of the exciting things that I noticed, and I don't know if you guys noticed it when you were down there, but the hallway that is complete, how bright and wonderful that hallway is as you're walking down that new wing. And so it's been nice to kind of see that step by step, but it's really starting to look like a completed.
See some progress.
Area down there, and that is wonderful to see. So kudos again to just being able to balance education and, and the SOL testing that's going on and seeing a kid run out of run room that had passed their SOL and how excited they were to hit three teachers as I was door judging, that she was so excited that she had passed and was flying through the door. And all that excitement is still going on, on the achievements, even with the construction and the beating and the noise and everything that was going on. So kudos to them. And the college visits, I think Bobby Marky has taken three massive trips of students that, what a wonderful opportunity for these kids to do some college tours that they may not be able to do on their own with their own families. And so shout out to him. I think they were just at JMU last week and that finished up their final three rounds of, of colleges. They'd hit UVA, they'd hit Virginia Tech, and I think they might have hit one other one, I can't remember that he had sent me a note on, but that was, that was pretty exciting to see. These kids having some great opportunities.
I agree.
So, that's all I got.
So I'll play, I'll just piggyback on that with Mark, with Bobby Marky, is when I was there today to judge the doors and I was talking to the principals, they were, everyone said something positive, of course, about Mr. Marky because he had to juggle, I think it was seventy-seven students that had to do remediation SOL testing with no rooms.
There's no rooms.
No, because of the construction. So everybody's, it's been quite a challenge.
I think they had an auditorium and like different places where they were skirted to today.
And it's been, yeah. And.
Their testing challenge has been unimaginable.
Amazing, yeah.
Unimaginable.
And that they, he's done a wonderful job, as we knew he would. I mean, he's, he's just a great teacher. And yeah, the doors were a lot of fun today and the students who helped with them. One of the things that I didn't, it didn't even dawn on me, but when I was looking at the, it's not ESL, it's ELS, right? For English learners, yeah. That room, she, the teacher came out, she was dressed as Buddy today, I don't know if you went today or not. And she came out and she was showing me some of the things that they did, the DIY stuff that they did was really awesome. And we don't even think about it, but she's educating the kids on what candy corns are. I just learned where candy canes came from. I didn't realize it was based on the staff, you know, of the shepherd or the J for Jesus. I had no idea, I just thought it was candy canes for Christmas, right? But some really cool stories and got to talk with the teachers too, which is always great. And everybody was all Christmased out, so I had to, you know, grab my sweater for tonight. But, so I appreciated that, it was a lot of fun at Brookville today. The kids that came in from, from Leesville Road, you know, Joel, thanks for bringing them. And why can I not remember the, the music teacher's name? Is it? Is it Alice?
Alice.
First name's Alice, yes. She was, she's everywhere. She's everywhere, and she is incredible. I don't know what she eats for breakfast, but we all need some, for sure. She is just a wonderful soul, for sure. And Mr. Wilson, I've, I end up saying first names all the time. I know it's not real professional, but yeah, thank you for the numbers, my goodness. I mean, that's incredible for discipline. I was at, can't remember, I think it was today while I was at Brookville, I said, you know, we have not had discipline come before the board.
Yeah, you better start knocking.
Yeah, I mean, you know, but, but that just, you know, really, and that enforcement up front and, you know, the things that, that you've shared with us about being able to do the referrals and have the parents be involved and help hold them responsible and all of the, all of the extra measures that you guys have put in place. It's just incredible. I was super thrilled. I haven't had a chance to read the law yet, but I do know that there is one, there is a bill that's going to, have you heard about the bill for THC to try and, so I'll get that to you, I haven't read it yet. But Carston Birch, Eric Zare, our delegate for Campbell's, he let me know that there was a bill that was going to be brought forward to try and, you know, have more definition to minors shouldn't have access to this, right? And also conversations are going to be had this year, they haven't seen a bill yet, but regarding marijuana. At, I think the major conversations I had in Williamsburg with other school boards was complaints about kids getting out of the cars, in the car rider line every morning with purple smoke billowing out of the vehicle. And the kids coming in, you know, with that exposure, I guess is the best way to say that, without any real enforcement being able to be had, you know, there to protect the kids before they come to school. So hopefully we'll see some, I'm super excited about that. So that was great conversations that we had. I had a blast with everybody, you know, it's great to always get to know everybody a little bit more personally at the conferences too and at the convention, had a good time. I do want to encourage everybody to also sign up to go to the Capitol Conference, the SBA in January, please come. I mean, it will totally blow your mind of how easy it is for us to literally just walk in the legislators' door and tell them what we, what we need in Campbell County. I mean, it really is, it's that laid back. And, and I'd love for everybody to go. There's a lot to learn there and much more than the conference, I'll tell you that. It is, it's one day, one day and a half. There's a lot more meat there than just broad-stroke stuff, you know what I mean? I just love it. I please encourage everyone to come. And off of the school board topic, I just want to mention something that I absolutely just love to do this Saturday at twelve o'clock is Rees Across America. I like to do Old City Cemetery, a wonderful presentation for veterans. And they usually have young kids come and sing to and do a great presentation and then lay the rees there in the cemetery. So anybody who wants to join us will be there at twelve o'clock on Saturday. And hope everyone has a Merry Christmas.
Same to you. Very good. All right. I too want to thank the fifth graders, that was very, the vitality of youth is always so much fun. And so, yeah, just those big smiles. So really happy with where we're going with our student support program and, and the num, hopefully those numbers aren't an aberration, but a trend. And so keep up the good work, yeah. Just follow-up, the SBA was a good, good conference. Just, I think I informed everybody since I was a delegate, the legislative items passed without incident, the only thing that did not pass was, remember they were proposing some changes to the bylaws? And those did not pass, which I think was a good thing. So that's just sort of technicalities more than anything else. Had our quarterly Laurel Board meeting on Wednesday. Last year, we authorized buying an activity bus. It was supposed to be here by October, it's not yet here, but it's in the works and hopefully by February it'll be here. So that's sort of an update from Laurel. Got an update from Sterling, Mr. Harrison down at Brookneal. They had a, they had a STEM Day on November twenty-first. They hosted a school-wide STEM Day to promote STEM. And Cheryl Lindman, which is a former Central Virginia Governor's School teacher, and Lanny Patrick and King Arrington did an excellent job presenting to students and demonstrating how STEM applies to everyday life. They had their Title I PTO Christmas Carnival on December thirteenth, and they will be holding their Christmas Carnival at Glendale Manor. That's always a big deal down there and widely attended there. He's happy that his attendance are improvement, are improving, and hopefully that's a trend. And he's excited to share that both his students and teachers are working diligently toward achieving our long-term goals and advancing student progress. He's doing a great job down there. And then from Brookneal, or William Campbell, they hosted a senior field trip to Randolph College, where they toured the campus, dined in the college's dining hall, learned about the admissions process, and attended a lecture in the engineering department. They've started to successfully launch their Future Business Leaders of America Club, which recently held its inaugural meeting, and, and good job down there for, for doing that. Their yearbook class won second place in the Woodman Life America is, America is video contest, and this accomplishment earned a fifteen-hundred-dollar prize. We'd also like to recognize Laura Lee Spickard, who earned a spot on the All-State Cross-Country Team. That's a big deal, a big honor for her and the school. And they held their Beta Club induction ceremony welcoming thirty-four new members into the organization. And so, and the Beta Club is also organizing a serial drive. They are hosting a winter art show and band and choir concert on December twelfth, and they are having a PTO alumni rivalry game. Do you know anything about this? It's a rivalry game between William Campbell and Altavista. So we are so proud of our students and their dedication. All right. And I too want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas. And I think that's all we have for tonight. Anybody got anything else?
Did the Educational Foundation fund these college?
Yeah, they funded two. So that was the Campbell County Educational Foundation, JMU, and those two, they supported the lun, the lunches for the students who went.
Yeah, I agree.
So they really are extending a lot of funding.
Yeah.
It's wonderful.
Yeah. All right. Well, with that, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Boyne, and second by Mrs. Tanner. All in favor of the turning? Say aye.
Aye.
Close, meeting adjourned.